Okay, then I think we're ready to start the public hearing. Actually, I think probably, the way it's listed, there are two hearings listed at the same time. The one is the scenic road review hearing and the other one is the special permit for earth movement. Scenic Road is listed second, but I think we ought to take a look at that one first. And before we start, well, first of all, let me just say that we've given this about forty-five minutes for review. And a few remarks preface. We were in hopes of having the draft decisions ready for both, the scenic road and the earth movement's special permit this evening. We don't have the decision for the draft decision for the scenic roads permit. That just hasn't been, we haven't been able to finish that one. Also, this is the very first second I'm looking at the draft permit for earth movement. I mean, none of us have seen this before at all, so it's absolutely, it's absolutely raw and it's twelve pages long. So, I know that the objective was to try to get, you know, decisions out and voted on this evening, but we're not going to be able to do it because of, at least because we don't have the permit for scenic roads decision. So, we're going to have to continue. I really apologize for that, but our hands are tied.
May I ask when the next opportunity?
Fifteenth.
Is the other option is doing it at a site?
Yeah. Yeah.
But that's only a good option if you get the proposal out to everybody in electronic forms that we're reviewing and everything well ahead of time. So basically, it's just doing the vote without our usual.
Yeah.
How does that work? It works okay. I know we got the simple thing.
For a simple site plan review.
Is this, yeah. Is this coming to that hang?
When's the next sidewalk?
Next Tuesday.
What, where is it?
It is on Meadowbrook.
Okay, I'm not going to be at that one.
So, on the seventh, there is no, there's a sidewalk at Meadowbrook? Is it just one or is it a famous double?
It's seventy Loring Road, nine Meadowbrook.
Yeah.
That's all the same?
Yep.
Oh, it is.
You haven't sent us that yet, you emailed.
Right, right. Seven Loring?
See, I didn't know we were going to have that one, so.
Nine Meadowbrook?
Right.
So, I, I'm not even going to be in town.
It's sort of like the way it's, it's an odd lot over there, you know what I mean?
What about the tall?
We do have one on the fourteenth. And then the next day is fifteenth, which is the regular meeting.
Right, so, I mean, it's.
So, there is a sidewalk on the fourteenth too?
Yes.
We don't know where it is, but.
Would you tell us?
How is there a chance that we can put this last on the agenda, so we have time to take care of it tonight?
We don't have the language, the special, the permit language for the scenic roads.
Oh, so you want both of them? Okay, you want both of them.
If four people are on the sidewalk, you could, you could do, you could do it without me.
Right. We all going to be there?
Yep.
I'll be there.
Yeah.
Will Steve have time to repeat the decision?
Once the special permit needs four, is that right? Yeah.
Once the site needs three.
I think the scenic roads just needs three, but the special permit needs a supermajority.
So, it's two.
Three or four.
No, no, but I'm talking about the number of decisions.
Two decisions.
It's two decisions at a sidewalk.
Right, that's probably.
And I'm all united.
Yeah, and then some people work.
Is there any value to one of the two? That's the question.
Right, yeah, correct. Is there any value in at least cranking one out?
Yeah.
Tonight?
Tonight.
And then the other one on Tuesday?
Usually, usually the scenic road one goes first.
With, as far as getting things started, so we're doing the least amount of impact during the school, so we'll see if we can get started as early as possible. I think the earth movement permit would be the best to get approved first. That way, we can stay away from the stone walls if we need to start working in the woodland areas.
So, we have the earth permit, the earth movement for us, right? Right here.
Well.
We just feel we's ready?
Are we going to plow through twelve pages tonight from, you know, from absolute scratch? At least thirty to forty-five minutes.
All right, well, we'll be doing that quite late, won't we? Is it, is it, did you know so? Right, this, the next one for the renewable energy is at eight-thirty, so if we just scratch the stone wall removal one and just go after earth movement, it's eight o'clock.
Do we have the slide right now?
No, well, the question is, are we going to keep these guys sitting here until eleven o'clock tonight?
Right, right. Or are we going to do it now?
This is what it's going to, what it would involve.
These guys mean?
The people here that are here for these two hearings, you know, we say, okay, we'll do the, we'll go through the hearings, but we won't, we won't read the draft decision until the end of the meeting. And maybe we'll get to it and maybe we won't. That's not very fair.
No, we need to do it now.
I'm wondering if we shift them to last place, if they'd be okay with that?
We can't because it's published. Their time is published.
It's now or never.
So, I would say this, I would say that we don't, that we, we read this in the next week. Make, put in our comments and make the decision on earth movement at the sidewalk next week, next Tuesday. And then, we make, we do the scenic roads decision at the next, at our next meeting two weeks from now. So, that at least gets you started, it's a, it's a week, but it's only a week, as opposed to two weeks, to get started on the earth movement and then we can back in with the, with the, with the scenic roads decision. Does that, would that, that mean, that doesn't keep you sitting here, it doesn't keep us sitting here until twelve o'clock tonight, and it gives us a chance to really look at this, as opposed to sort of skimming over it and, and making comments on the fly. Would that be acceptable?
I think that would be okay.
That would be okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just barely had time to skim through it myself.
Oh, good. So, yeah, you're going to want to.
Violent agreement.
I would like to see, yeah, have a little more time to look at it.
Are these, are these public? Can we kind of, take us, next we start to assure the scenic roads. Because the last meeting didn't show up on the agenda. It will be published. Be ready to go when you do the meeting on the fifteenth, just so.
Well, what we'll do is go through the hearings tonight, go through the presentations, and then next week, the next meeting, all we'll have then is the draft language, special, the draft scenic roads permit language to review and vote on. No, no testimony or presentation. Okay, is that, is that a plan?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate, you know, your flexibility, honestly. All right, so let's, let's start with the scenic roads hearing. We'll open that.
So, I failed to learn from the last time, did not bring these shoes, so I'll steal this chair again.
In this road, yeah, just in this way.
We get stolen, stolen, stolen. We used to have three.
I think that shouldn't be the nice.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, the scenic roads, so what I've done to try to help people understand what's going on with scenic roadways, and actually, this can be used for a couple of purposes here for the earth movement, but we've overlaid on aerial photo the approximate limit of the excavation areas per the plans that were submitted, so you can get an idea of where the stone walls will be removed, where trees near the roadways will also need to be removed. I realize people are sitting far away, but this is the best we could do to get this blown up. And there's some areas, this is an approxim, approximately, maybe two, two-hundred-and-fifty foot area in here where the excavation will extend up the property line. The stone walls are on the case estate's property, so we'll need to temporarily remove the stone walls, stockpile the stones on site, and to be able to conduct the excavation beneath it. Now, before the stone walls are removed, there'll be a photographic documentation of the stone walls, so we know how it was constructed in that area, and the contractor will replicate this after the backfill's put in, and they build the stone walls to the same, try to match the existing. So, this is about two-hundred-and-fifty feet here, there's a proposed egress area over in this area here. I think it's probably about a thirty-foot wide opening that we'd be doing in there at a stone wall. And then, another smaller area down in here, probably another thirty or forty feet that'll be up against the stone wall, another large area down here of about two-hundred feet that'll require a stone wall removal. Now, all these areas were staked out a week and a half ago, I think. The majority of the areas do not have significant trees against them. This area is actually all field and overgrowth. I think there's a couple of small trees here. Down in here is the most wooded area. On the wall itself, I think there may be one oak tree that's got, I can't say the diameter, but we did flag that so people could see it, that would need to be removed. In the other areas, there's actually no trees along here that are adjacent to the roadway or down in here that are adjacent to the, well, I guess there would be probably trees down in here that would need to be removed as well. We tried to make it so everybody can take a look at that out in the field when they need to.
Would you do, has anybody done a photographic record of what the stone walls look like now?
I took several photos and I emailed them to the planning board at Betsy, so she could have those. So, we do have some pictures of those that have been, that have been sent, yes.
You can have them here, because they were too large for me to download.
Oh, really?
Well, on my iPad, we just all have with me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have the pictures with me now.
Do you have them?
Yeah, I thought I sent them.
You did send the link. It's a downloadable. But, her huge file, you had them on your computer where you could show them to us?
I mean, they show the character, but, you know, is that, is, that's what you were going for, just the general character of the walls?
I was just trying to document the areas where we're going to be doing removals, so people will get an idea of it by looking at it. This isn't the documentation the contractor will use to be able to rebuild them. A lot of these walls right now are overgrown with poison ivy and a lot of places are bittersweet or other kinds of stuff growing over, so you can't even see the wall.
Right.
I wasn't going to, I'm highly allergic to poison ivy, I did not want to trudge through that.
No, so, at some point, you would have a set of documents that the contractor would work to reconstruct the walls?
He'll be taking photographs of it to be able to document the conditions, he'll be submitting that to us and to Green Seal, so we can take a look at those.
So, we could, we could get a copy of those for the record before the, before the guy started dismantling walls?
Yeah.
So, we could, we'd all be on the same page when he put them back together again?
Sure.
Can I bring up one point? Something that Warren Flynn used to bring up, which I thought was incredibly picky you, but rather important. These stones, when they're removed from the wall, they're covered with lichens. If they are buried in any way, the lichens goes away, and then you would have a raw stone, which takes another fifty years for the lichens to kind of come back on. So, they need to be, those rocks need to be treated sort of like artifacts. And I, I, this.
No, no.
I remember thinking, Warren, oh my God, seriously. This, this was the truth, that if they're buried or covered with any kind of soil, they lose all their lichens and then they're just raw walls and we could just be putting in stone.
Okay, no, they will, well, they won't be buried, we certainly won't be doing that.
They'll get stockpiled. Have air circulating around them, their lichen-y face will be facing upward to the air.
I don't know if they're going to go that far, but they will be piled.
Right.
You know, I'm sure the contractor's going to want to not send them too far away from where they're originally located, because that's just a lot more work on their part. So, I'm assuming they'll keep them stockpiled near the places where they've been removed, because they're not all going to be bundled together and mixed up.
In some giant places, and there'll be little caches that belong to this section.
Right, for each section, that's right.
All right, so I feel better.
We won't bury them here.
Okay.
You said that the length of wall removal on the wall was about two-hundred, two-hundred feet, two-hundred-and-fifty feet?
Something like that, yes.
And on Ash Street, sort of the same, over a couple hundred feet?
Yes.
Okay, because the Ash Street stakes are three-hundred, three-hundred feet apart.
I went out there and did this from a plan myself. I did, they're not a survey. I tried to provide the most conservative assumptions I could to limit those, so everybody could, kind of like a worst-case scenario for stone wall removal.
That's what I thought. Is there, is there a way to match up the stake locations with what's actually going to be removed, or do you want to leave some latitude in case you find things that really would, make you have to remove more stone wall than you think you'd do right now?
You know, I can't, I can't imagine a scenario, because we're not expanding these areas, which would require us to expand those stone wall removals, so I think the areas staked are conservative. I can see if we can get a surveyor out there, if we really need to have them that accurately located.
Are there landmarks that you could go by to?
That's what I was trying to do, I was actually getting some funny looks, it was entertaining. It's, when you stand out here, when you're running along Ash Street and a lot of people are looking at you, so. But I was trying to use the distance between the home here and the driveway here to mark out this location, and trying to get the right distance beyond the driveway to mark out the other location.
Right, I think that, I think the one, I guess it's more even north and south, the one, the northerly one, just based on what I remember, is, is pretty close. I think the southerly one is too far down.
Yeah, I agree with you. I, I think I might have come down.
Down too far.
There, I, I believe I did.
Yeah.
Like I said, it was conservative, I wanted to give everybody the worst case so that you could see it, and it's always better to do less.
Before he removes them, he will have an exact idea of what has to be done. So, could you confirm exactly where he's going to remove them also, when you do, when you provide the documentation on the, on the, on the walls themselves, so that that becomes part of the record? Could you, could you do it that way?
Now, is this in advance of the, so I'm just trying to figure out sequencing, this would be, so the contractor does have to lay these out by survey?
Right.
The whole, the whole area, he's got to lay out by survey, so at some point, this will be surveyed out.
You need to know just where that is.
And he will know exactly where that is that needs to be removed?
At that point.
And it's not in his interest to move any more rocks than he has.
Gotcha. So, at that point, could that be part of the record?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
We could, we could write that condition in, that currently, the stakes are in approximate locations, but you'll confirm the exact ones before any stones are removed?
Yes. There is, you know, there is something, I'm walking the site with the contractor to talk about this. One of their access points is going to be in here, coming into the existing driveway, and he brought up that the, it's very tight to come in that driveway, and they need to move a couple of stones on either side. And I believe those are the hen's tooth stones, so they're much easier to document, place to the side and put back as they are now. We did this at another property down in here, we did some work in here, and there was the hen's tooth stone wall, they were able to number the stones and put them back where they came from. So, I think he's only thinking of a few stones on either side, but it did come up during a sidewalk, the contractor.
Okay, all right, if we just had a record of that, again, before the guy actually starts working?
Yep.
Then we could make our, we could condition that, and that would take care of understanding the limit on what needs to be done. Any other comments?
I have a comment, and Mike had emailed me to say that they were going to remove vegetation around the stone walls, basically mechanically, as opposed to using counters. And I guess, part of the walls you can't really see because they're covered in vegetation, so I think it would be best if there was documentation on the walls after the vegetation was removed. That makes perfect sense.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, they're pretty overgrown now. The ones on Ash Street are, I mean, no. Any comments from the audience? Yes?
Yeah.
Could you identify yourself?
I'm Brett Robbins, two-twenty-one Ash Street. I just, you had mentioned there was one fairly large oak tree that would be taken down. Just as the planning board is part of the conditions for, I know you're, I'm sorry. Do you ever cause replanting or do various conditions?
Right, the way it's work, it's working now, the town will do the, after the back lans.
No, no, I understand that, but, but it's still, this is before you, and you can make a condition of something happen, I assume, either by the town or by Harvard or both. I mean, I, I mean, you.
Yeah, what, what, what would you like to say with respect to that?
Well, I'm saying that, I mean, I think, I think one of the nice things about Ash Street is that, is the trees that line the street, and I think it would be helpful if after this were completed, that some mature trees were planted, or immature tree were, were planted, and I would prefer that to be a condition, rather than being left up to the town to decide whether or not they want to pay for that.
But the town's going to have a consultant, a landscape consultant.
Well, hopefully, it'll be, I understand that, but then, but right now, you'd be making a decision, kind of in the dark as to what's going to come up and.
Replanting is not in their scope. Harvard's not, not doing the replanting, so to condition, this is, these are conditions on Harvard's activities, so we can't place a condition on Harvard's activities for which they're not responsible.
Well, you could, they can make, they can make, I mean, they could require that the person who's purchasing for them do this, right? I mean, otherwise, you're, you're agreeing to having this, I mean, having trees be removed and land cleared without any conditions placed upon it.
If you want mature trees in that area?
Yeah.
I swear to you, mature trees will go in that area.
Okay, I believe you.
That's a personal, that's a personal assurance.
Okay, that's good enough for me. Thank you.
It's an old, hundred-year-old oak, I'm not being.
We won't be able to plant a hundred-year-old oak, but they'll be mature trees.
Okay.
A tree of sizable caliber.
Personal guarantee.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's fine for me, thank you.
Can I just add to that? Generally, the tree warden would like to see if the tree comes down, kind of a two-for-one replacement.
Okay.
And I can talk to him, because he's the tree warden, and he might have a little extra money to plant.
Okay.
But he generally likes large hardwoods that would overhang the street and prevent them.
Terrific, thank you.
How many trees total are being removed around the stone wall? Did you say one total?
You know, when I, when I was walking the stone wall, there was only one tree I saw that is growing, actually, it looks like it's within, within the stone wall itself. Other than that, it's stone walls, the trees are behind it.
But do any of those trees that are behind have to come out when the stone wall's removed?
All the trees, they're all.
So, we have a bunch of trees coming up, but no, none that are sizable caliber or anything like that, or they just, I think that's kind of what the question is.
There, you know, the, the only place where there's trees right behind the stone wall is right in here and right in there. A lot of this here, aside from the one oak tree that we just were talking about, a lot of this is just not the best quality trees.
Those trees aren't in the right of place.
No, they're not.
That's, that's, that's where there's an interface. That's the second hearing, that's the earth movement hearing, but those, anything in that yellow area, however old it is, if it's three-hundred years old, it's, it's going to be gone. And then, the challenge is going to be on our backs to put things back together again in a way that people can live with. Anything else? Any other comments? All right, then, we can, we'll continue this until the fifteenth, when we'll have a draft decision and vote on it. And what time?
It's probably going to be, probably seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five. Seven forty-five on the fifteenth. That should be, we're not going to take testimony, we'll just review the draft decision and vote on it.
Is there a appeal period for the stone wall removal we need to be aware of, and if so, how long is that? Is that, okay. Thank you.
Okay, good. Then we're ready to move on to the earth movement special permit hearing. And are you making the presentation on that as well?
Yes.
We've, we've actually, do you have anything to add to what you presented last time?
You know, I know there was a bunch of things that were brought up. Be happy to discuss any of them, the issues that were brought up in the past.
Right, I think one of the things we talked about was that some sort of survey of trees to be removed in the, in the zones that you're responsible for, and, and, you know, it seems to me that the, it's not going to be so important to know exactly which trees get removed in, in, like the areas in the pine woods, for example, or necessarily, you know, behind the, the case barn, but one of the areas that we, that we carefully looked at six or seven years ago, whenever it was, when we were, when we threw this the first time, was the, was the, the fringe of the woods behind the field, sort of to the east of the ranch house, you know, that, that edge of the woodland, right beneath. No, no, right, right there. We walked that pretty carefully.
Is that like the Rhododendron Garden?
Right next to the Rhododendron Garden, and sort of up into the woods to the north of that field. That would, it would be, that would be a helpful area to get information on when you have it, so that we can pass that information along to the landscape designer, that the town's going to have to start looking at replanting. And, and I don't know if we need the same level of information off Ash Street, because everything's going to get bulldozed, so, so that's a, that's going to be a blank slate as far as the landscape design is concerned. But it would be interesting to know how far back into that fringe you, you need to go and which trees get taken out, and right in that area for me would be the one that I'd like more information on, not so that we could deny you're taking the trees out, but just so that we'd be able to communicate the information to the landscape designer, so get him into the process.
So, you're referring to this area up in here and those areas, or just this area here?
For me, just that one.
All right, the, yeah, the majority of that is not within the tree areas.
Right.
That's almost all field.
It's almost all field, it's just that, there was some question about how far back into the woodland it needed to go.
So, we did speak to the arboretum about, you know, I think one of the concerns was, what about the trees outside adjacent to the excavation? And we spoke with the arboretum about that, and they said essentially, if the trunk of the tree is within ten feet of the excavation limit, it probably will not survive, because it's a, you know, a very large tree. If it's outside of that ten-foot radius, or ten-foot line buffer around here, then it should be okay. This is a general rule of thumb. So, if you're thinking about how far in we're going to be going here, really not much at all. It shouldn't be impacting many trees either.
Right, so we just need confirmation of, when you know, you don't know yet, but when you know, how far back you need to go, so that we can begin to think about how to knit that back together again.
Okay.
That was, that's my only comment. You guys have any?
I was sympathetic to some of the questions brought up last time from the neighbors, and I just wanted to review with Kevin a few questions that we had, that I had. Are, the neighbor's going to have a contact number, a way to get in touch with someone during this process in case they have concerns or make observations?
Yeah, so we're going to, we will post at the property contact, point of contact for August directly, which actually will be in my office, and we are going to do another mailing to all the neighbors to try to collect. mailing to all the neighbors to try to collect, well, to share information about that, and give them that contact information, and also to ask them if they're interested in receiving regular updates from Harvard, to give us their email address, and we'll, we'll give that same email and contact, contact information, and we'll, we do have some emails on record from previous times when we had implemented some communications programs, so we will do that as well. And then, as the project gets going, if there's a sense among the community that we're interacting with, that it would be beneficial to have a coffee or a gathering or something, we will organize that as well. But we thought right now, because we're kind of scrambling to, to satisfy your needs and get the project going, we were gonna try to shew one that in between.
Thank you very much. The other question I had, with respect to the neighbors, there's monitors that are set up, and I think someone asked a very legitimate question, is, you know, what is the threshold when that monitor goes off? Does it mean it's dangerous when the monitor goes off? Does it mean that we've caught it before it gets dangerous? Can you just elaborate on the threshold level where a monitor's going?
Sure, so the threshold level that we set is actually below a calculated level. So the threshold level's, I think it's 150 micrograms per cubic meter, which is really the National Ambient Air Quality Standard for dust, getting a little technical, but that's actually below any calculated level that could possibly pose a risk. And even to come up with that number, what we looked at was the highest concentration of the contaminants in the soil, and of all of these areas, we took the highest concentration, and we assumed that someone would be standing and inhaling this dust for 12 hours a day, five days a week, at the highest level, at this, above the action level, to find out, you know, we're, I'm sorry. Inhaling dust for 12 hours a day, five days a week, at that highest concentration, determine what an action level would be, now it's still above the 150. So to, to address the concern about whether it's risk at 150, or whether it's really bad, a dangerous level, no, it's not.
And the monitors are placed in the most affected areas, in the work areas?
The monitors, at least one will be down gradient, the wind down gradient, and there'll be others surrounding the excavation area as well. So if we see an instantaneous exceedance, we're gonna make them knock that dust down. So that's not even close to a 12-hour exceedance. But in addition to that, these monitors have lights on them that can be set at certain levels to start to flash, let you know that there's an instantaneous exceedance, so you don't have to be standing next to it and looking at it any time during the day. We'll have those sets, that we can see that happen.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, Jim?
Yeah, just wanted to add a comment to, to look at with Green Seal. We talked at the last meeting, we talked about that as a rule of thumb, when you're out there and you're doing the work, you know, whenever visible dust is seen, that additional dust measures, dust control measures will be implemented. So that, by doing that, you should, you should be able to keep the dust down, though it'll never even hit those meters, but, you know, the 150 that we set is basically, you know, quite, quite a bit of dust, a lot more than visible dust, so when you're out there doing the work, if the, if the trucks are going back and forth and dust is being raised, then that would be a time where you'd say, well, you gotta put more water on this, on the road to keep the dust down, and that will be an extra precaution, that you don't have to wait for the, the machines to show the exceedance, but you're just controlling it all the time.
And the workers themselves are motivated to look at the monitors, right? For the most of that.
Not necessarily, but, yeah.
Well, that's our, our staff is gonna be the one looking at the monitors, ours and Jim's staff.
It's gonna be Green Seal's gonna be involved.
Be out there, so hopefully see if they're, you know, that, that also helps the public perception, because if they drive by and see dust coming up, you know, they're not gonna, they're gonna think there could be a problem, even though the dust monitors will probably show that it never really went on site, it's just another way to do it, and I think you're in agreement with that. That would be a trigger for dust control, visible dust.
Right. Jim, have you seen this draft decision yet?
I saw it about 15 minutes ago, yeah.
Yeah, same sense. So you're gonna need time to look at this, too?
Yep, and I'll, I'll get comments back to you, and I can come to the, where's the Tuesday be, gonna be?
It's going to be out there.
Okay, tomorrow morning?
Well, book, it goes, book, it's a change of.
What time will that be?
Eight o'clock in the morning.
Eight o'clock, okay, Tuesday, so I'll get your comments before that.
And I'll send it out electronically tonight and tomorrow.
On the, just, you know, on a related topic, the, the issue came up, what, last week, about the water usage? And Michael Herd, I thought, made a good point, I've been thinking about it, and that is that our conditions, that water for irrigation and lawn sprinkler systems has to come from on-site, and can't, and cannot be imported water, really isn't germane here, because this is a construction project with a finite usage, a finite time limit. And so it's not real, it's not really.
It's not watering.
It's not watering the grass for, you know, year after year, day after day. It's just to get the project done and started, so I, I don't, I don't think this is a, this is a condition that's, that, that we need to impose on this project, recognizing that distinction. And that being said, I don't think it, I don't think it's our business to know where the contractor gets his water, or how much he uses. That's the contractor's business. So I, I'm just quoting that out there, does that seem reasonable to people?
Yeah. Can I add something in that the Public Works Director basically said, offered comments, and basically said, if a hydrant were to be tapped in this area, it would have to be metered, and it would have to seek the approval of the water superintendent?
That's between the contractor and the, the water superintendent, that's not our, that wouldn't be one of our conditions, any more than it would be for any other construction project.
Okay.
So that's, that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's off the table. Any other comments? Good, in that case, we'll continue the hearing to next Tuesday at 8:00.
This is gonna be a public hearing, so it has to be advertised.
Okay.
Has to be advertised.
No, well, it's a continuation, so we're okay, okay.
But is it at 8:00 that we're gonna remove, or not?
Not.
We don't know, let's say 8:00.
Eight, right, yeah.
This is, I'm sorry, the hearing is continued until Tuesday at 8:00.
The 7th, at 8:00.
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM, and.
At Loring Road. At nine Loring, uh, 70 Loring Road.
That, that'll work.
70 Loring Road, nine Meadowbrook.
Yes, Joel.
So you'd be posting this as a public meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a public meeting.
Just double-check, because night visits don't have to be.
I know, but this one will be.
Will have to be now.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We should be done.